I got six thirty, let's go ahead and get started.
Instead of just handing you the folder.
So that's Christmas decorations down here?
Yes, that one for you. The other one was the...
That bottom one was my name is out of the account of Marshall River Farm Christmas decorations. Jan's kind of taking that on this year. Put him sign in the side please. That way I sign too, yeah.
I looked at that, I see somebody.
Well, yeah, just have it just initially. Okay, I've got a few things under old business. Yeah, that's good.
You know, they do.
I was just reminded to make sure I tell you what the claims were. For the town, one thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy-two cents. And for the water department, five thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-two cents. We had difficulties finding the water meter, the meter pit for tones down here. It had quit working or had been sporadic, I don't know if it quit completely. But they came in using a metal detector, couldn't find anybody out front. Andy was contacted, he told us where he thought it was. Ended up blacks came in with a mini excavator, scraped about twelve inches of that stone off, never did find the meter pit. So our next avenue for that is to get the Alliance that we belong to to come in and listen. Just turn on a faucet in the house and they'll be able to track that sound of that water back and hopefully we can find it. It's possible that when they put that sidewalk in, they buried that meter under concrete. That's what we're thinking right now.
That's polyvinyl line feeding the house?
Yeah, yeah, there's no way of tracing, putting a tracer on there. And where it connects to the main is going to be pretty deep, so. Ronnie Senior thought that was probably the most cost effective and we belong to that, so it shouldn't cost us anything for them to come and listen for that.
We've had them in here before do that.
Yes. So they're left with a water meter that's not working real well as far as giving her a reading. And she's able to go ahead and bill based on history on that. And we've talked to tones about that. I met with a gentleman from Beiler Construction about doing the building at the park and covering that. I got a verbal quote from him over the phone, matter of fact, I got this evening. His price to do all the work was seven thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars, which is quite a bit more than the first quote that we received. I don't see any way that I would be in favor of eight thousand dollars on that little bit of metal going on that building.
Did Brian's include metal or was it just later?
Did all of them, the eaves too Kevin?
That was only the fascia, because the eaves are just open.
They're open now.
Yeah, and there's no way to box those in because of the way that that bill, I mean, I guess there is a way, it'd be very expensive. So they would do the fascia on that building and leave the sofa just open, which works fine in that kind of a building. You asked if that included the metal? It does.
It does, just put labor in.
Yeah, labor material, everything. So we're in a kind of a bind because of the weather and I don't know Brian's schedule.
Don't look at me.
I mean, you occupy all his time.
No, I'm not. I haven't seen him since a week ago Sunday.
I want to hang out for a week there, probably start, oh, middle of next week maybe.
So I will get a chance to call and talk to him. I'm not sure what else we can do.
So I want to back up then, so I know the last meeting or so kind of talked about that, kind of wanted it done by the end of this year, twenty twenty-four.
That was because of township commitments, yes.
Can that commitment carry over till next year or not?
Well, I think it'll be rebudgeted. Yeah, but we would not realize twenty twenty-four's dollar amount, we would just realize the twenty-five budget amount.
I won't bet you down that price, he probably can't own that price anymore, it's price materials, you know, goes up, you know.
Right, yeah, but we're just between a rock and a hard place, because this was given to us in July.
Yeah.
It was before that.
That's wrong, true.
Well, that didn't include the fascia either, did it?
No.
His did not include.
That's just metal on the building.
Yeah, that was all that was at the time.
Well, anyways, I want to make sure that remains, hopefully maybe available next year.
Well, I think it's, yeah, I think it's a continual amount, yeah.
I'm not in favor of that for almost eight grand, I'm not.
Yeah. Not either. Is there anything under old business that you have?
I had that written down, parking sessions and...
Did you find out anything about hydrants?
Have a flush on the hydrant.
They have flush hydrants?
Never have.
And what about the, let's see, but there's still not five water for us.
That's a conversation that we're going to need to have.
So I have looked into that some. I haven't found the statute that requires water to be hooked on. Sewer is required if there's a district that you can require them to hook on. But I haven't found anything for water yet. Electric is the same thing. So I'm assuming there is something for water, but so far I haven't found the statute that says water is required. So, once I do find that, though.
But we're not selling water, right?
There's no meter there.
Nothing there.
That's what I thought, yes.
And I've had them checked.
I just don't like the precedent that it's possibly setting, but...
If I can find something that says that they're required to use the service, then we can do something about it. But so far I've only found electric, I've found sewer, and specifically haven't found water anywhere, so. Which I already knew electric and sewer were required, but I've never dealt with the water issue.
But you can't shed her water.
No.
And see, I don't know, that's not happening, but...
That's a health issue is why you can't do that.
I don't, I don't think it is.
Say what?
I don't think it is. Because that wasn't original property to begin with.
Yeah, it pays not about my water though.
No, I know, but there's not been any digging or anything that I've noticed. And by now, a hose would have been done frozen.
Pretty much.
Well, that letter is kind of a word salad though, like there was a lot of stuff in that. And I guess there is one sent to the prosecutor too that had a lot of weird things in it is what I heard, but I don't know.
Okay, so we're better just to sit back and wait for...
I need to finish researching it, but usually those kind of things I can find right away, so maybe there's not much we can do about it, unfortunately, but we'll see. So if it were electric or it were sewer, I'd tell you, yeah, we can definitely do something about it.
And it might be that they're hauling water in.
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, I don't know.
Well, I'd like to find out how this court case comes out.
Right.
I am keeping tabs on it.
Okay.
I don't know, I had messaged Brady about some things that they'd asked me for. I don't know if Brady ever got them to them or not, do you know?
Since when, recently?
About a month ago.
I haven't done anything.
Okay.
So if there's anything that I need, I mean...
Yeah, they wanted more information.
No, I know nothing about it. This last thing was back months ago that they were asking for more stuff.
Yeah.
If you want to forward it to...
Yeah, I'll forward it to you. I have several things, but I don't know if you want me to go now, you want me to go later?
Let's go ahead and go through the new...
I will, on old business, the playground.
No, I have not got a quote for that.
Oh, I contacted Kyle about the insurance. And he said, I said, "Right now, we're thinking it's about fifteen hundred dollars." And he said, here again, he said, "You could submit it," but he said, "You guys are under the radar." And he said, "I don't want to bring anything to attention to cause your rates to go up." He said, "I would just assume no more than what you're looking at," because he said, "If you're not careful, if you get to the top of the list for some reason, they start looking at you," then he said, "You could start in and go up, up, up."
I understand that too, why are we under the radar?
He just said, "Because we've not had any claims or anything," and by being a town, he said, "That's when they could come back and find out that, well, you should have this, or you might want to have this, or start in." And he said, "I would just assume just..."
Well, there's going to be a deductible on that.
Right, and he thought, he was going to look up deductible, he didn't have it in front of him, and I don't remember what it is. And it's either five hundred or a thousand. So he said, instead of, because he said, "They like to go to towns and then when something gets done, then they start in." And he said, "Then I see it breaks." And he said, "I just would not like that to happen to you guys, because you guys don't submit claims, you don't have any problems." And he said, "Everything's covered sufficiently," but he said, "They always find something to nitpick you on."
Well, I would like to get a quote from this playground company and find out what our deductible is, and then we can make an intelligent decision.
And that's what he said, he said, "See what your quote is," and he said, "We'll do whatever you want to do." Because he said, "You are paying for it," but he said, "I just like for things to just stay bouncing along."
I will say, we have not had any additional vandalism after we ran some of that down.
Not coincidental.
Well, I think some of the kids left town, because the one parent said that he was living by himself now.
Yep.
Yeah.
So...
They're not riding the school bus anymore.
So that's all on old business.
Okay. New business, Kathy was telling me here a while back, she believes there's maybe a leak here, a small leak, like two thousand gallon, is that what you were assuming or?
We use about five hundred here a month, so it's about fifteen hundred gallons additional is what's showing up.
But we're not seeing it, I mean, it's not coming, it's concrete floors, we're not seeing it here, so...
And the guys aren't hearing anything running in the mornings at six o'clock when they're here for coffee and thought maybe it was a runny toilet, but that doesn't seem to ever be running.
What we might do is get ahold of Senior and have Alliance when they're here, go ahead and listen to that line from the meter pit back, because I think it goes between the buildings all the way back.
So I'm just kind of watching it. And our numbers aren't out of whack by any means, so...
Okay. Just putting it out there that my wife is planning on trying to get some additional Christmas decorating. We've had some volunteers to come help, so I want to put that out there. If anybody wants to help, that's great. Excuse me?
That's why we're here.
Good, yeah. We do have some, a few new things, you know, that stuff's very expensive.
I know, I have to look online. It was terribly expensive, and I didn't know if you guys buy from a certain place or do I need to ask Rockville, what town, you know, the town of Rockville, who they buy from? I don't know.
That stuff's outlandish, you're talking thousands of dollars.
I know, just for one, no, four hundred dollars.
Yeah, we can't do that.
And then put power to it.
We have lots of things for uptown, and we do have some things that have been used in the past that we've refurbished, so we can put up some of that. And I know the flower areas and all. So I understand you're volunteering, wonderful. Yeah, we had planned on taking those other fall decorations down by now and begin, and contacting you since you guys had let us know. And the weather, they throw a curve ball.
Sure did.
Yeah. So, yeah, we're very open to ideas. I know they changed the lights on the arch the other day. The drums underneath the soldiers are going to be put up this week by the fire department. She's going to plan on taking some of those fall decorations out of there. The tree up there has lights on it. We had to use RMC last year to get them up that high. So we don't have any idea if the lights still work on that large tree or not.
They plug into the building over there?
They do plug into Futurix, yeah. They've been gracious enough to let us plug in there.
I want to sort of like put it down.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Those girls are on it.
Yeah.
We need to start an internet company then.
Yeah.
Thank Ranja and Vicky Kerny and Sheila or Sandra. But Sandra's got the, she's got the lift thing that they use.
Well, we're open to ideas and help of any kind.
There's some more help, I have curving through town.
Before you leave, make sure we get your name and number on there so my wife can contact you. I don't know if it's going to warm up at all in the next...
It showed sunny and forty-four Saturday.
Okay.
So that's not bad.
Saturday's supposed to be about forty-seven, huh?
Yeah, I said forty-four and sunny, so that's not bad.
No, I'm pretty sunny, if that works out, if that's bad, then we can, yeah.
Yeah. Yes, it says forty-four, so that's good. Forty-eight sunny.
I'm going to have surgery tomorrow, so. I'm out.
Oh darn, it's his rotator test.
Oh, he definitely has to.
I can point with one arm.
I feel it. If you hear yelling down at our end in the, just ignore it. Bad patient, bad patient.
Okay, I think we're up to you.
Just kind of update on court proceedings. Our next court date's the fourteenth of January, that's when Kings are back in court. I asked Brady if he could reach out to them, gave them the contact information as far as they wanted to know specifics on what to do. I told him I really couldn't answer that, but that he would.
Yeah.
So I don't know if he's talked to them or not.
He and I went out and talked to him.
Okay.
So he, he filled the guy there, I think it's one of the boys, who has nothing to do with the house. So we went to the older brother that has some control over that, and he wasn't there, and he was supposed to call Brady, but I don't know if that...
So Emmanuel's the one I've been talking to, and that's one of the boys, but he's actually on the land, like ownership wise.
Yes.
So I don't know, but that's the one that came to court, and that's the one I talked to.
Okay.
But they're due back on the fourteenth of January. So I guess I'll touch base with Brady and get updating as far as...
Right.
We have this, Adam Smith is January twenty-first. I'm not sure which property that's related to though. That's our next two court dates. We did get our small claims resolved at our last court date, November nineteenth. And then the Lawhorn property, which is...
Oh, wait a minute, small claims on who?
Booth, youth.
That, which I never got the papers, that was canceled, right?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
I never got any, well, that'll come from the court, won't it?
I'm pretty sure she paid though, right?
Yes, she paid me, but I didn't get anything that showed that was...
I just haven't sent it to you, I dismissed it, it's good.
Yeah.
And then Lawhorn, that property was deeded to whoever's currently living there that's over on, by the church over here. So I told Brady we have to cite the new owners, because the old owner, once he deeded it over, we can't do much with him at that point. So I'm waiting on the new citation on that property.
Okay. And he stopped there and did not get anybody to come to the door to date?
Yeah, that's what they were doing to the guy that they were buying off contract before they weren't coming to the door, so he ran into them like IGA or something, he told me, and had them sign it.
Now, the last conversation I had with her about water, she said, "He works out of town all the time and she can't come to the door, she can't get around."
Oh, well.
And I, so, because she can't get up to get her mail and stuff.
So I mean, we got to go, he can post the citation, but I need to be able to prove that they actually got it in order to do anything about it. So that may end up being a problem. But that's kind of update on where we're at on court case wise.
And do you have the new owner's name or is he on our water?
I texted, let me find the text with Brady. If not, I have the deed that has the name on it.
Yeah, I don't know if it's the same as what's, I haven't looked to see whose name's been put on it now.
David Crowder.
Yeah, that's who, Waters.
Yeah. And we didn't have service on Smith is why it got set over. And then I gave him Emmanuel King's phone number, so he has it too. So I guess I'll touch base with Brady before we have our court dates and just see where we're at on things. But without service on the new owner, I can't do much on that one by the church. The Kings, if they haven't made...
And they were responsive early on, so...
Yeah. If the Kings haven't made improvements, there's things I can do about that, but...
No, it's gotten worse. Windows are now broken out.
Yeah, so Judge has been, originally he was giving people thousand dollar fines, now he's been doing twenty-five hundred more often, so. That might be what he does with it, I don't know. Those are all the court cases I have coming up anyway.
Dale, anything else?
New business?
Yeah.
Farley property down here's had complaints.
Excuse me?
The Farley property by the church, their neighbors complaints, Dr. Camp route back.
That was all addressed the day that Brady was in town with me. And I don't know if it's been removed, but that was going to be removed. I drove by there a day or two ago and coming in from the east, and it looked like it was gone, but I haven't driven down Turk Street to see.
I haven't either.
Yeah.
That's the only thing I had.
Okay. Kathy?
We have the contract with the fire department for twenty twenty-five to sign. And I left the check on my desk for this year to take over to them. And I'll stop and get that and you can take it to them. So if you want to sign that. And then you can take this. Then we need to look at if we want to change anything that we can think about and if you want to wait till January to pass, any salary discussions that we want to address. And on that note, this is through October for Brady. This is through November. For, I thought I had that on mine. Oh, here it is. And this is for mine, just so you guys know. And I did keep separate the lead and copper hours. It's included in my hours for the month, but I just broke it out to where that, of that, there was four, four and two. So, just so you kind of knew what was going on with that. That is finished, so we're done with that for a while. My thing, I would think, I would like to see the per hour rate to go up on the subcontract work a little bit. What's the minimum now?
For what?
Minimum wage?
Oh, eight, seven, eight, twelve, eleven?
Oh, it's eight, oh, okay. Because there are some times that they are out there on the wet ground and stuff, you know, reading those meters and stuff, and they're getting wet and they're having to pump them out, and so I'd like to see that go up a little bit.
Seven twenty-five is the minimum wage.
So, we're at thirteen, but I'd like to see them get a little bit more on that. So, sometimes they, I mean, an hour, they could do four or five meters. So... And other than that...
Kathy, do we have a minimum we pay them?
I always pay an hour, thirteen dollars an hour, I always pay them thirteen, for sure.
Yeah, that was a discussion early on when we started that. You can't already call them in and say, "Oh, I know it took you fifteen minutes to work and cut that thirteen down."
Now, that doesn't cover if they have to go shut a meter off or turn a meter back on or any of that. That's separate. This is just for when they have to go out and check the meters for me and replace a meter and...
Yeah, I could probably pull up something out of there.
Is there any published information on small towns for...
Not that I've seen, but I don't even, that would just been conversation, but...
You know, that association that sends stuff?
Yeah, I haven't seen anything on that. Of course, some of that's the bigger towns that...
Right, but I think small towns would have similar costs and similar salaries, but maybe not. Right, but I think small towns would have similar costs and similar salaries, but maybe not. Okay.
So, I say, so yeah, I would say we'll have to, cause I'll have to have something for January, cause I'll have to submit it to Gateway and everything. I have to submit a salary ordinance to them, but I mean, this that we do.
It'll have to be done January then.
So, we'll need to do something in January, no later than February. So, they'd like to have that when you get started. So, um, our water, um, usage is staying right around nineteen thousand gallons. There's, look at that. So, that's fairly good, really good, really. I'll do meters, probably Thursday, I'll read them Thursday, since today's Tuesday, and see if there's anything odd going on. But it's not showing anything.
Your question about flushing hydrants, I have contacted them four or five times. Still not, not done. So, we can go a different direction if we want. Um, that's something for us to discuss. It's probably too late now to think about any, any of that flushing. I mean, it's gonna have to be spring.
How many hydrants?
Thirty-three.
Something like that, thirty, thirty-something. It, it was always up to the fire department to do that. There was no cost. The fire department just did it. Uh, but now with not only flushing hydrants, uh, UMAC was gonna exercise all the valves so that we knew if there was any sticking, any problems going into it.
Do you think they forget us?
No, I could, because I've personally contacted the person that was gonna do it. I don't know, they, they usually are very good about staying with their, with the plan, but it just hadn't worked. So, that's something for us to think about, whether we want. Employ somebody else to do it?
Hang with that back if you're done with those readings, unless Dale must have done.
Yeah, sure. Exercise any valves.
How big of an ordeal is that?
Um, not too bad. And once you locate where all the valves are and then, I mean, you open them and close them, I think. Well, we found out when we went through that construction phase when they replaced valves. Some of them were replaced because they were locked.
They were locked there.
You could not turn.
I remember that.
Yeah, and they would do, the purpose was they would do record keeping of all of, of that.
Well, I guess, as soon as we're not getting it done, it doesn't look like. Looked out about your uh, pay per hour. We not offer that person that opportunity to do that? I mean, I don't know, I'm asking.
I, I don't know. I don't know what the intent was for UMAC. I don't know what kind of ledger, what, what they're doing with that. I know we did flow rates, flow testing on those hydrants at one time with, in partnership with UMAC. So, we knew what those flows were. And it's a good rule that you test your hydrants to know what kind of flow you're gonna get out of them for fire protection. And you'll go to some towns and you'll find a red cap or yellow cap or a green cap, and that means a certain flow rate on that hydrant. So, that, that's something for us to think about. I think we've got time to mull that over. But yeah, it's possible.
I, I mean, I guess flushing hydrants, flushing hydrants better than not flushing hydrants, period.
Right, yeah.
I guess it's.
Thing else?
I'm not done.
You, maybe you are, you stopped talking.
Well, you guys were talking. I was waiting to see if you was gonna say anything more about that.
Okay, Forrest.
What?
I said, okay, Forrest. That's all I could say about that.
I plan on talking to Wesler to find out what our target date on repainting the tower. You know, we're several years into it now and I don't know whether it was a twenty-year cycle or less than that.
And there's looking at minutes to improve. Did you get your lights?
You know, I don't know. That's a good question.
I just wondered if it's in those meeting minutes.
Haven't talked to them in, since our last meeting.
But yeah, we're staying pretty good on the dollar amounts here, so. But I think I've got a couple of things I haven't been built for.
Okay, I'm sure you haven't been built for towns.
No, and I don't think I've been built for.
Joneses?
Yeah, I haven't got that, which, that's gonna be repaid. Um, but mine, that I had, that was back before I went Florida. I was trying to see which vacation.
Yeah, that's pretty bad.
That's pretty bad. Which one, Alaska or, or Florida, one extreme to the next. Arizona in August, April.
It was bad?
I don't know. Todd's not going. He's gonna stay home. He was offered. Turned it down. Other than that, I don't get asked. Oh, I got this taken here.
Okay. You're good.
I probably have, I probably have Steve's in my phone.
Did you have ideas for decorating other than, I mean, we don't have money, but.
I'll forgive them.
Yeah, I don't know. Even the directions of the lights in home.
But we don't have a lot, like Bloomingdale has all the buildings and the church and all the fire department.
And they do that.
Yeah, we do that fire department. I thought about putting lights on my little building back there, but just never have.
Yeah.
But, yeah, that's the fact that.
Can we use this land up here or not? Is that the base?
On that side of the parking lot or?
Yeah.
Yeah. That belongs to the girls, the girl across the road on that corner, and there would be no problem of using that.
Those have to get electricity there.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, that's right.
We have power to both pillars of the arch. And we borrow power from Futurix for the tree and for the, the reindeer things that are set out there in the lawn.
And what about in front of the fire department, in that hole?
Um, yeah, I'm sure.
Power there though.
I, I'm sure that'll, that would be a, a good possibility. I know in years past, the, Jason has put up lights along the fire department in front.
He's had a blow up or two out there in the past.
A blow up, yeah, that's right. Um, he just got out of the hospital, so I didn't think he was gonna put those, those up.
Unless Jackie or her boyfriend do it or something.
Yeah.
I mean, we just kinda need to see what you guys all have and go from there.
Okay.
At this point, I guess, since it's, we, we could do better after Christmas.
That's like year toward next year, yeah.
Yeah, year toward next year.
When they wheel out that cart at Walmart, it's ninety percent. I can go get things for nine cents.
We, we checked several places. Lowe's really has some pretty nice stuff.
Lowe's does.
Yes. Um, Menards doesn't have much. I don't remember if we were in Home Depot, but we stopped a lot of places to find out. And I mean, you can spend a thousand dollars without buying much.
I get magazine with, for town stuff, but just the littlest thing, I'm like, oh my gosh, there's no way. And I think, how, how do these towns, even the things that Rockville buys, I'm like, oh my gosh. When I first start seeing those prices, I'm like, gee. Somebody going to trash every time. I just don't even open them anymore.
Yeah, I agree.
I think if we plan far enough ahead.
Work toward doing.
We've got, we've got avenues for grants and things. RMC grants that help communities, that Marshall Forever Fund is another option. As long as it's decorated and used for town, can't be for private property, but yeah, I think any of that would work.
So, how, how do you feel about blowups out there? I mean, is it, I don't, I don't know. I've never had any.
I just had blowups and you fight them with the wind.
That's what I thought.
Is the problem, right? Yeah. And once those strings are broken and snapped, they're gone. And I would have to go put a chair on them when they go down at night. Um, if it's kind of get heavy wind come through, if it rains and has ice or something, then you can punch your holes in them. So, I stayed away from them at my house. Um, I used to have blow molds like crazy. I had like forty blow molds in my house. My house was lit up big time, but I gave it back. It's in Bloomingdale now.
Shit.
Well, my son took it. It's at his house. And then when he gets done, it's gonna go to Bloomingdale to, to them, cause he's lived there.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, that, I just didn't have good experience with blowups.
Yeah, that's kinda.
I just, I'm not a fan of them.
If we could find somebody that was like good at woodworking, like do a train that we could paint for future.
Well, see, that's what those are. Soldiers have been going, yeah, I said, how old are those soldiers?
Oh, they're twenty-five years old.
I was gonna say, how long has Larry been gone?
Well, no, Kyle was about, uh, he was probably about eight years old when they were first put out.
I say, I remember him, yeah, doing those.
So, that's thirty-seven years old.
And worked on, but they're just so heavy that.
But it's like coming into Wayland, somebody had made like three candles. With the joy to the world on or something. I forget what it was, but it was all made out of wood. It was like, you know, if we can build something like that and start using it here, like soldiers.
Right.
You know, that kind of stuff, just start building them.
Right. Yeah, I just saw here, he'd make something like that.
And we saw all that right before we were here, right? Or you have some stories back there or?
In the little garage and then in the back is where the soldiers go.
So, they, soldiers do come down originally?
Yes, they just didn't get down this year until it was close enough, it's like, no, you should take them down and put them back up. Cause they're so heavy that the fire department takes quite a few guys putting them up.
It does, yeah.
So, that's why they had trouble and it can't be winged.
Right.
Right, yeah.
So, yeah. So, yeah.
So, maybe find somebody that could do some candles or something. Hang them and put a silhouette on them and. Then they wouldn't go blowing across the, then you could get a spotlight and put it on the rack.
Yeah, and some of those, I mean, um, I think the French church in Bloomingdale has one of those white nativity scenes, it's wood. It's like a silhouette like thing and, and has the candles and things. And I don't know where those come from. They've had them forever too.
Are you guys okay with putting a nativity scene out there at, at any time or is that?
I have no problem with it.
The churches wanna do only or?
I.
Like a silhouette like she's talking.
There can be a complaint of, of that.
Right.
If we put it on that property on the other side of the parking lot, that's private property, that's not town property.
Okay.
Um, so we would have to discuss the financing of something like that.
Okay. And then, um, what about timers? Do, how do the lights come on when we, when we do these things? Are they on timers?
One minute.
The, yeah, they, they just ran. They were all LED lights.
Oh, okay.
Uh, so there wasn't any real cost to that.
Okay.
Uh, the arch has an electric eye that's supposed to turn on the lights. The electric eye quit working and we never gotten RMC back, but it's LED lights again, so. It just costs pennies.
Right.
Right. Yeah, I think ideas and manpower, womanpower was gonna be the big thing.
Right. And then we get, see what we got this year and then we can build on it. Use the summertime to process it to our, yeah, buildings.
Well, I appreciate it. Appreciate your willingness to jump in and help.
And the subtle beds and stuff like that, I can build.
You could probably sell them.
Okay.
Is that getting me closer to chickens? I'm just kidding.
Not even a little bit.
If you wanna cut out wooden chicken, we're all.
Yeah, you put all wooden chickens on your fence.
For things. Anything else, anyone?
You can take them to lunch.
You're selling your house.
We're adjourned.